To have my back to you who are here, you probably know as we do our work sessions, that we talk among ourselves at canonical time today for public testimony. So please excuse my back. I do have something to say, to share to all with all of you and the council. And that's to thank Councilwoman Lacy for being an interim councilwoman for us. If you all don't know her, she has been representing Board 7. And has done it very capably with enthusiasm and punctuality and tremendous readiness and preparation always. Thank you. Thank you so much. We're all here. Okay. We're going to celebrate. And we just again so much appreciate what you brought to the city and what you have brought to each of us in your work as a councilwoman. You represented your ward well and the city as well. All right. We have Peter Fernandez, Director of Public Works.
Thank you.
Peter Fernandez, you're going to open the session and get us started?
I am. Thank you so much. Welcome all. I think today we're going to be a little more -- council requested that this be televised. We're not going out live. I believe it starts airing tomorrow. But it is recorded for posterity and our friends at CCTV I'm sure will run it often. But because of the cameras and because they need to record the audio, then we need to be a little more formal and speaking to the mic. So thank you so much. What we have tonight is our second in this series of work sessions. Julie Warnicki reminded me that actually we've had several work sessions with the council over the past few years, keeping you up to date. But as we move toward council getting the information that you need to make a formal decision on which option you like from the environmental impact statement, then this is the second of these sessions. There's also some staff here with us tonight. Julie Warnicki, who's our transportation planning manager here. Judy Postier, who's our administrative assistant, who keeps us all set. Mike Jaffrey from SCATS, who will also be making a brief presentation tonight. And Dave Simmons from CH Twoham Hill. And then we have assorted other staff in the back of the room that if questions come up like last time and we need them, then we'll have them introduce themselves and provide council with some additional information. So what I want to do is I want to do a very brief presentation tonight. With staff presentations at all, we're going to do about a half an hour or so. We want council to once again do a lot of dialoguing among yourselves. So it'll take about a half hour and then we'll spend the rest of the evening with the council dialoguing. And I think we want to be out of here by about 7:30 because I think there's Christmas shopping that has to be done. Okay. So like I said, I'm going to do a recap about 10 minutes. Once again, as the mayor said, because it's a work session, we welcome and appreciate the public being here. I think this is terrific. We're really breaking records for work sessions. But because it is a council work session, you are welcome to listen in and take notes, but no testimony tonight and no written materials. This is strictly for the council. The council has promised another public hearing, once we're done with the work sessions, to take testimony on the final selection before we proceed then with the EIS process.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Mayor, please.
If people do have questions, they can save those. They can email them in to us.
Absolutely.
And we have sort of a funnel point that people can send emails to the city clerk.
Yeah. Yeah. So I'm going to do a recap of our November 28th work session. Then we're going to have about a 10-minute PowerPoint presentation on the traffic volume and traffic projections. I know that there were a number of councilors that inquired about that and what you wanted some more detailed information on that. So I'm going to do that. And then Dave Simmons, our consultant, is going to do a review of the alternatives, which is something else that the council wanted. You know, what are all the options? And then how we built from alternative 4A to alternative 4D. And so Dave will be presenting that. And then we'll want to get into the council discussion for the bulk of the evening. Okay. So on November 28th, we had an excellent work session. And I think the reason people were so excited about the work session is that council really got to dialogue and it's so rare. Usually our work sessions are death by PowerPoint. And that's why I've stayed with my low-tech paper because I think that provides for more discussion and less slide review. So I'm sticking with this for the rest of our work sessions on this stuff. So we talked about the EIS process and how we had gotten to where we've gotten. You know, we shared that the materials are very large and very extensive. We talked about council consideration and timing, the fact that council is considering all this information as well as all the testimony that has come before you. And that there really is no definitive timeline. Obviously, we want to get through our business. We have many other things, many other city business things that we need to do. But you really have all the time that you need to make this decision. We talked about the various options that are before you. And today you'll get more details on them. And then we kind of finished off the evening with discussing whether the council, whether there was a consensus among the council for a need for a crossing and then what we wanted to accomplish with that crossing. And I want to be clear because I think there's been some confusion that in a work session there is no final decisions made. That decision will be made at a council meeting, probably after a public hearing. But you know, we're having this discussion so if there's, if we had asked the question, is there consensus that we need a crossing? And the majority of the consensus was that we should not have a crossing, then we would have had a different conversation. So we need to at least have some sense that the council wants to proceed in having these conversations or else we'd be having a different set of conversations. But I want to be clear, and I want to be clear for the audience, that no final decisions are made at council work sessions. All right. So what council talked about, that was my presentation, is council talked about what the reasons were for another crossing. And we talked about the seismic issue, the fact that the existing bridges would not be usable after a significant seismic event, that they cross floodplains, that we need to address community growth, that we need system redundancy, that you know, the traffic volumes, the projected traffic volumes will require some additional crossings, and that we need to address alternative modes as a part of this project. We talked about the capacity of the existing bridges, talked a lot about the bridgehead engineering study and the work that we've already done to implement the recommendations of the bridgehead engineering study, the needs for freight movement, the downtown impacts of the existing bridges and whatever future bridges, and what the regional needs might be. We talked about the impacts of a new crossing, what the livability might be around those crossings, the tidal cloud, if you will, of adopting or getting a record of decision for a big project, what the economic development opportunities might be with a new bridge, both regionally and within the region of the bridge. And we talked about phasing the bridge and phasing the project and the additional planning needs that will be required, you know, beyond, you know, we're heading towards a final EIS and a record of decision. But even beyond that, there'll be much more planning that needs to be done with respect to the land uses around the bridgeheads, transportation system plan amendments, UGB goal exceptions. I mean, there's just a whole host of things that will need to be done after we're done Council had some requests from, of us. The first one is an options overview. And like I said, Dave Simmons is going to provide that to us. So you'll see all the options and you'll see how we got to option 4D. Council suggested that we create a website. We're working on that. There is a website already. It's SalemRiverCrossing.org that has all of the information in it, very detailed. What we're working on is a simplified website, similar to what we did with our rate proposal, where folks can come in and get some specific information and get to certain links or certain parts of the document, as well as information that we've been providing the council directly. So it's a little more distilled to make it easier for folks. So we're working on that.
We actually have a draft up. We'll send out an email later this week with a link.
Okay.
We haven't much of it started.
So coming very soon. Council requested that we televise. We're here. And council requested that we get into more detail on traffic and volume forecasts. And with that, that's the cue for Mike Jaffrey to come in and do his 10 minutes more or less. And then right after that, Dave Simmons will come up and do his. We can be informal and go to questions while Mike's presenting, but we want to kind of keep it to 10 minutes so that we can get to the dialogue part of the evening. So I guess I will let the council police itself.
That would be fine. I think we could save our questions to the end of this presentation.
Okay. Very good, Mayor. All right. With that, Mike, thank you.
Good evening, councilors. I'm here.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Okay, this started.
And you'll need to be sure that you speak into the microphone.
Into the mic. Okay. Okay. Just again, my name's Mike Jaffrey with the Midland Valley Council of Governments. Have been working on these travel forecasts with the consultant team for a while and a member of the project management team. So we'll get situated here. Oh. Turn this off. Okay. So I'm here to talk about the traffic volumes and the forecasts. This first graph shows the volumes on the two bridges combined. So I'm going to use this pointer here. You can see, this is the line that shows the total volumes on the two bridges. That number was fairly flat, below 50,000 in the 80s. Started climbing in 1990 to 61,000 between 90 and 2006, climbed to over 88,000. And hit this here. About a 27,000 volume increase in that time, 45%. But then after that, since its peak in 2006, it dropped about 5,000. So I'm going to focus first on some of the reasons why the traffic volumes may have dropped in the last five years since the 2006 peak. So what you have here is also travel volumes on various roads. This is the bridges. The blue line is Wallace Road, just south of Glen Creek. And this green line is Highway 22 near the Oak Knoll Golf Course. So as you can see, the blue line on Wallace Road, starting here in the 90s, has gradually gone up, up. There's some ups and downs. Around here in the peak of 2006, it was about 38,000 or 39,000. And hit that again. In this period here where the volumes dropped, there was a dip, but then traffic volumes have started going back up. So we're back to just under 40,000. And a little bit of contrast, volumes on the Highway 22 leading to the bridges from places like Dallas and whatnot have peaked in 2006, dropped. Technology here. Declined and then by about 3,000 and then stayed flat since then. So part of that 5,000 volume drop is partly due to the drop coming in from Dallas, Monmouth, Independence, or travel from the coast, to and from the coast. I'm going to talk about some likely reasons for the decrease in bridge volumes, the science to the location of those. So let's first look at unemployment. That's one factor. So Polk County unemployment line is this orange line. It was around 5% in 2008 and it jumped to over 9% in 2009 and has steadily decreased. It's about 8% now. A second reason is the decline in West Salem residential construction. So this is building permits from the city of Salem. The blue line are single-family residential. The green line are total units from multifamily building permits. So during the 90s to about 2006, we have a range of from 200 to 500 or almost 500 new housing units each year in West Salem. Quite a bit of growth. Then, starting in 2007 with the recession, building permits dropped dramatically. And you can see it stayed low since then. Gas prices. No one needs to know that gas prices have been bouncing up and down. Here's Salem's particular gas prices. So here we have this up and down roller coaster of gas prices until 2008 where it hit over $4 a gallon, a sharp decline in the recession. And then since then, the increase between $2 and $3, getting up to $3 where we are now, or over $3. Finally, travel behavior. SCATS does a household travel survey. We did one in 2010. So one question we asked of the people we surveyed was, as a result of the current recession, what changes have you made in regards to your daily routine? And I'm going to show you the answers here. So the people we surveyed, 34% said no change. They didn't make any changes. 24% said they traveled less or they forego travel, didn't go wherever they used to go. Some took, traveled to closer destinations or made shorter trips. Many people combined and chained trips, meaning instead of crossing the bridge maybe eight times during the day for all these activities, combining these trips, combining shopping trips or all their trips. Some took a different mode, 6%, and then some just said other. So with that background, let me talk a little bit about the forecast on the Salem bridges. As you know, forecasts originally come from the state of Oregon, are assigned to counties, and then counties are responsible for coordinating those forecasts to the cities. So a big determinant of travel is the amount of population growth you're expecting in your cities and counties. So this chart shows some historical and future population, starting with Polk County. So here we are in 2010, 75,000 population for Polk County. Over 117,000 is the forecast. And that's for the cities, the counties, the entire county. Next, we have West Salem, growing from 26,000 to over 42,000. Dallas and Monmouth, I combined Monmouth and Independence. So looking at West Salem, that's a 61% increase over 20 years. And looking at Dallas and Monmouth Independence, a 92% increase over 20 years. And that, those numbers come from the, from Polk County and it's in the 2009 Polk County Transportation System Plan. The West Salem one is from the SCATS Regional Transportation System Plan. So let's look at West Salem a little more closely. In 2009, we have a land use inventory of West Salem. And we looked at available residential land. So here's West Salem. Here's the high school, middle schools. All the yellow areas are parcels that are available for residential development. Some are totally vacant. Some have one house on 10 acres. Some have one house on 3/4 an acre and could be subdivided or parcelled. So all these yellow areas are available residential land. Then, one of the things that the regional MPO does is do forecasts coordinated with the cities and counties, of course, we don't do it alone, to look at where will growth occur. So this shows of those yellow areas, the blue areas are ones that are forecast to develop by 2035 to meet those population numbers I showed you earlier. This is a 2035 population of 44,000, but it corresponds to what I showed you before. So from all those forecasts, those are the main determinants of growth of travel on the bridges. So because of the nature of travel forecasting and the nature of the bridges in particular, we're going to focus on the peak hour travel over those bridges. So this is a chart showing, it's an older chart, but it's typical of what the peaks are. They still apply. This is showing the peak hour of volume on the bridges. So this is on the Marion Street Bridge, pretty low in the middle of the night. This is 8:00 AM. This is midday. And this is 4:00 and 5:00 o'clock. So you can see that peaking and the level of congestion that grows on Marion Street Conversely, here's the Center Street Bridge. The peak is between 7 and 8 o'clock in the morning. And then it drops another peak or smaller peak in the PM, between 5 and 6. So the problem on the bridges is the congestion in the peak hours. And that's what we focused on for the EIS. So we use those population and separate employment forecasts, plus forecasts of regional travel going through the area. We combine that, put that information in our travel model. And then we, the output is future year volumes on the roadway system, including the bridges. As I mentioned, we focus on the peak hour forecasts. What I'm showing you is a graphic from the EIS showing, oops, got to go back one. Showing, these are the bridges, bridge volumes. This is Wallace Road. This is Highway 22 coming in here, downtown Salem. And it's maybe a little hard to read, but this is the forecast volumes on the bridges. This is in the PM peak where Wallace Road traffic is more peak than Center Street traffic. Almost 7,000 vehicles per hour on Marion Street Bridge, about a little over 5,000 on Center Street Bridge. Now, our model actually had a little higher volumes. One thing we did for the EIS is we reduced the volumes on the system from West Salem by 8% to account for more transit, more biking, more car pools, more working from home. So the original volumes from the model were higher, but we reduced them to account for those factors. And that's all I have.
Are there any questions at this point? Councilor Tesler?
Thank you. Sorry, I've been outside all day. Is this, do I have to talk in this thing?
Yes.
Okay. Just checking. So I'm looking at your model here and I'm just curious if this model takes into effect a couple of things. This is 20, uses your projection for 2031, correct?
Correct.
Right. So does this take into account the current transit system as it exists now? Or, I mean, what if there was better transit? I mean, what if there was a bus line? I mean, gas, think of these things. If there was a bus line that went from West Salem directly to the Capitol? Or some kind of thing like that that would get people, you know, around in an efficient fashion where you wouldn't have to drive your car? So I'm just trying to think about, you know, did you, is it possible to include, you know, I know that's kind of a strange adjustment to put into a model, but did you include those possibilities?
Well, the travel model does include transit. So part of the trips generated do end up going to a transit line that's built within the model. And to answer your first question, I believe for the forecast, we use existing level of service of transit. However, during the course of the study, we looked at ways to potentially reduce volume on the bridges, including tripling transit service in West Salem. And while that had a small effect in the model of reducing travel over the bridges, it was fairly small. And I don't have the numbers, we can find the numbers for you, but I don't have them memorized. It was fairly small amount of reduction on the bridges. Well, as I mentioned, and since we are hoping that transit will grow in the future, that that's one of the reasons why we dropped the original volumes from the model by 8% to account for future transit.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm just full of questions tonight. The other question that I had when I was also considering this model and also reading some other additional information was that I would be interested, this may sound like a goose chase, but I would be interested in seeing some demographic information overlay with this, with traffic volumes because there's been a lot of discussion about how younger people do own cars. And that the trend is kind of going towards people not owning a car and switching from not owning a car into alternate transit modes. So I guess I would be interested in seeing that because I think that may have some influence on the future, you know, who is using a car and who is using that kind of transportation. I think that our demographics are going to show that we do not have a great younger demographic here unfortunately, because I'm an old salt and I'm not even 50. So, sorry Chuck.
Yeah. Counselor, I just want to be clear that the model, you know, the modelers put in, you know, three times as much transit and that generated some numbers. And then on top of that, the numbers were reduced by 8% to account for kind of these additional lifestyle issues. You know, our model doesn't have that kind of lifestyle. That's a very complex model that we don't run in the region. But I, my sense is that these numbers are really the lowest possible numbers that, that in fact, if we don't get transit at three times higher level of service than we have today, and we don't have these lifestyle shifts, and we don't have some of these, these numbers will actually be higher in 2031 than they are today. So they are, they are in fact conservatively low based on all of those things, not conservatively high.
Can I answer that? One more answer. So if you had a transit going over the bridge every six minutes, so let's say, or every 10 minutes, a transit line going over the bridge every 10 minutes, it's full of capacity, let's say 35 people or 50 people. That's maybe at peak capacity, 600 people on transit. Maybe you can reduce the number at maximum if you had a bus every 10 minutes, they were full to capacity and they handled, you know, that many persons per bus, so.
Counselor, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So looking at this, you know, I'm concerned about infrastructure after you get off the bridge, not necessarily about when you drive over the bridge. And the question I have is I'm looking at, say, Liberty and Commercial, and I'm looking at Center and Marion, and I'm looking at Wallace. Are these numbers that I can't read right now, are they, and I don't need to read them, are they over the capacity of those streets, AKA their major arterials? Are these numbers higher than what our major arterials are designed to take?
Well, I think Dave's probably better to talk about that.
Okay. And if it's going to be answered later, that's fine.
Dave's presentation is going to get into that. But I can assure you that they are because these numbers are significantly higher than what we're running today in Marion Street already. I don't live in West Salem, but the few times that I get stuck in that traffic, we're running four lanes. And at five after five, 10 after five, we're backed up to the Capitol Mall with four lanes with the traffic we have today.
And that means it's overloaded?
So, yeah.
Above demand?
Yeah. I mean, once, you know, any time that you see, in the simplest possible terms for traffic engineering, anytime you have to wait through one signal cycle, you're over capacity by definition.
That's what I need to think of.
Yeah. So then the policy question for the council becomes is, you know, you can make a policy decision that, you know, and you hear this a lot from our citizens. Well, so what, you know, if you have, if you're congested for 15 minutes or 20 minutes or 30 minutes, you know, that's fine. You can make that decision. At some point, then the question is, well, what is the limit? Is the limit an hour, an hour and a half, two hours of congestion? Because as the numbers go up, at some point, it becomes, today we don't have those issues because you're right, by 6 o'clock it's clear, unless something happens and you're good. But it's a real, it's a good policy question to ask, well, what is the limit for that?
Counselor Bennett and then... Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Blasey.
I had a couple of questions. You prompted one for me, Peter, just an observation. I drove here from 16th and D, and it was, by your definition, everything was over capacity all the way here. Stop signs, stoplights, I waded through two cycles on 12th Street and Court. I waded through a full cycle at, coming along Court twice. So, and then coming Commercial to City Hall, I ran through two extra cycles. So everything, coming into and leaving the Capitol Mall was apparently out of sync.
Right. Well, it's just we're over capacity, and we know that.
Okay.
We know, we run, this is, we run this system, we know that our system runs over capacity at the peak hour, and there's nothing, you know, there's nothing inherently wrong with that, you know, we know that. I mean, to run it at capacity or below capacity, you would need many more lanes of traffic.
Well, just an observation, from 16th and D to City Hall took me all of 17 minutes running through all these lights and all. How long's it take someone then? And I'm not sure what this means in terms of...
Travel?
Yeah, travel time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would have to run, there was kind of a next step for this kind of modeling, which is to do a traffic simulation model, where you can actually see how vehicles start to back up, and that's something we could do, if you wanted to, it costs more money. But, but, you know, if today, you know, there is, I mean, I'm just, I really don't know what it would be. At some point, it starts, you know, there comes a point where it's just a lot, you know, so.
Why, okay.
So, and you just have to, I mean, it's really a policy question for the council to decide, I mean, what is, what is a lot? Is it, some people might argue that 17 minutes is a lot, some people might argue that it's an hour, or two hours, or three hours. I mean, that's really, that's really the policy choice that we have to make, and we, the community makes the policy choice by how we invest our transportation dollars, how wide do we make the streets?
Well, let me give you, a lot is $800 million.
Oh, yeah, yeah, listen, no, I'm just, I'm, you know, this is, no, no, I just want to, I want to be clear that, you know, that what we're showing you here is, those are, those are the modeling facts, the policy decision is what you want to do about it.
Well, it's hard to do the policy decision without understanding what exactly we're act, I don't know what those numbers mean in terms of people's experience, and then what that, you know, represents in time and lost, you know, lost wages, lost time at home, all of that. That's what I'm trying to understand a little bit of, to equate with the cost of at least 4D. The other is, I noticed this one, it's the only other question I have right now, but this model does not show planned improvements on the west side, or presumably there are some improvements on the, or on the west side, or on the east side, particularly thinking of kind of the Marine Way and what that does. That's on the books. So I, when you modeled, did you model also with the already scheduled but unbuilt improvements that have been suggested?
Yes, yes, we did.
But what did they do to this?
Well, what we do is, in our regional plan, we have what we think is affordable by the region over 20 years. It's the projects that you've approved, and we have to kind of do a financial analysis and see what you can afford. But we include all those future year projects, Glen Creek and Wallace Road, I believe we include Marine Drive, is that correct, Dave? Yeah. So we included things that are in the regional plan that we expected to be built by 2031. That's all included.
So those numbers, it's hard to see when it's not there.
Yeah, you don't see...
Marine Drive.
Marine Drive, because this is kind of focusing on the major approaches to...
But this assumes some relief by Marine Drive?
Uh, yes.
Well, I'd be interested in seeing what those numbers look like.
Done?
For now. Thank you, though, I got to get a fork and a cup of coffee.
Good. Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Blasey.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Make the presentation, thanks. I'm trying to understand relationships of gas prices and congestion. It seemed like the gas prices peaked in 2008. Can your slides go backward, and can we see what the peak flows were in 2008? Boy, we got to go. Sorry.
So that's the gas prices.
Okay. So what's the peak here?
Well, it's almost 425 here.
And then it drops?
Then it dropped, demand dropped too. And then this is, this is $3, and this is about $4 now.
So what we see there is a widely jumping and dropping based on the market or people's reaction to the market. So what happens on the bridge peak travels during this era?
I can't show you, I can only show you the daily, I can go back to the daily. I don't have a peak number.
Oh, okay.
Today, I can probably get one.
Yeah.
But you can see at least on this one that...
Well, over time, it's fairly, I mean, there's drops.
Yeah.
In 2008, and what's the blue, Wallace?
Blue is Wallace, just south of Glen Creek, so.
And 22.
And this is 22 in green.
But overall, the bridges line, while it drops, stays fairly flat?
Well, it does drop, the scales are a little different. This is the blue-green scale, this is the red scale.
Okay.
But it did drop from 88 to 83. And what I was showing in the presentation is, I think what the likely factors are, all those things of unemployment rate in Polk County, less travel coming in from Dallas and Independence, I'm sorry, speaking in the microphone, gas prices.
Right.
Very sharp decline in building permits in West Salem. All those things are contributing factors, I believe, to this 5,000 vehicle drop. Now, there could be lots of other factors, like the one Counselor Tesler brought up, and people are, you know, using Netflix instead of going to the movies. There are, you know, a dozen factors, I guess, that are potential contributing factors of why, during this recession and during our changing world, could affect this, this drop.
Is there, I remember in the study, information also related to the region, not just Polk County or West Salem, and this is a regional issue in terms of 2031 forecast for population, employment, and traffic. So we have data related to Marion County and City of Kaiser as well. I remember being briefed on it, I just don't remember what the overall trend was for those more eastern parts of the SCAT region.
Well, the model, the model is the entire Salem-Kaiser, excuse me, Salem-Kaiser urban area. So it's the entire model, we're not just modeling the bridge and a few roads, we model the entire Salem-Kaiser area, and all the population growth from all...
East and west.
East and west, and then we model trips that we think are coming from Portland and coming from Albany and State and et cetera.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's see. Actually, Counselor Blasey, and then we'll go back to Counselor, oh, and then we'll go to Counselor Dickey, and then back to Counselor Bennett.
Thank you. I have a, oh, I'm sorry. I have a question that's slightly random, but I'm curious about what you think the impact is. You know, for those of us that work or live in the downtown area, every two years, for about six months, we see a very large influx of additional traffic due to legislative session. What is the impact on the bridges or the traffic in the downtown area? I mean, those of us that work downtown, we see that daily. I'm just curious if that...
Well, I don't think I can specifically answer that question. The numbers here are from ODOT, and they average the entire year, so traffic, if you looked at the bridge volumes, you can get a month-by-month volumes, and they go, you know, they're lower in the winter, they're higher in the summer, they're highest on Fridays. You can break down the volumes all sorts of ways.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Dickey?
Thanks. So looking at this chart, I'm a bit close enough, looking at this chart, if I'm understanding, one, I want to make sure I understand this correctly, so it's the green line and the blue line added together is the volume?
Not exactly. The red line is the bridge, and I chose to focus on two streets that are major, you know, contributors. I don't show Edgewater, there's an Edgewater on RAM. I just picked two locations that are representative of travel going toward the bridges.
So what percentage of our bridge traffic comes from Polk County?
Well, if you look at this for sure... We did, if you look on the back, it says history of the bridges. And you see that, right in the middle of the page, that pie chart, it's kind of small to read, but it, we did a survey back in the mid-'90s of actually handing out survey cards and asking people where they came from and where they're going, just a postcard. Local trips from West Salem to downtown, or vice versa, anywhere else in the Salem-Kaiser area, was 56% regional trips over the bridge, which include anything from Dallas to downtown, or Kaiser to West Salem. Not Kaiser, I'm sorry, but what's a silver tin to West Salem. So they have one end in Salem and one end out. That was the other, the yellow part, 37%. And then through traffic, going all the way through the region, coming from the coast, going to wherever, Bend or Portland, just 7%. If that's helpful.
Yes, thank you. So I have, I guess, I don't know if it's a question or a comment, or I'm not sure what you call it, I'm kind of intrigued by the fact that in Polk County, the Monmouth-Dallas Independence area has grown by 92%, and yet their numbers are declining. And just looking at the chart of the traffic over the bridge, it seems to be a very short or small, but steady decline over the years, and I'm really wondering if possibly that's not due to the fact that they've become more self-sustaining over there? I mean, there's other factors, including unemployment and things like that, but I lived there 20 years ago, you had to come into Salem for everything. You go over there now, you don't have to come to Salem for anything if you don't want to. So I'm wondering if that might be a factor that may not change because they have become more self-sustaining.
First of all, the 30, the percentages, just so we're clear, this is the forecast for the future, is 92%.
Got it, okay.
And that could be a factor too, added to the cost of driving from Dallas to Salem, if you can get it in Dallas, stay in Dallas. So that could be a factor for some of the decrease too.
Counselor Bennett, I think you have lost his turn, so. No, we'll take your question.
You see, you came with a chopstick, it's not all it's cracked up to be. Just kind of following up on Counselor Dickey's question, looking at your history, there's a lot of study that has gone on. Did you go back and test population and traffic assumptions, kind of historically, what your predecessors forecast in terms of population and traffic counts, and what actually happened, to just get a sense of what's been going on?
I would say that, you know, let's say 15 years ago, or more, when we did traffic forecasting, I was just, started the agency 20 years ago, I've been there that long, but there were traffic forecasts, and with a not as good model, and hopefully we've improved our forecasting a bit, that they forecast a number, but they couldn't have, let's say, forecasted the recession that we just went through. So most forecasts assume, you know, not these big ups and downs, they kind of assume over the long term, the growth will occur based on long-term plans of population growth, and there can be, you know, hiccups in that forecast.
Well, we've been, you know, at least actively studying a bridge, an additional bridge, throughout my time in Salem, which is getting closer and closer to 50 years. So I assume that there've been a number of projections, that they weren't just guessing, but they made projections. And I guess what I'm curious about, because we, I got to believe this is fairly inexact, just listening to how you speak of it, you know, we believe, the value judge, you know, you're putting some, how's it gone? Have we been pretty accurate over the years? Understanding that the, I don't, and I'm not going to call, the science, I guess, of forecasting has improved, I would just be curious about the testing of your assumptions and your analyses of it compared to your colleagues in the past, how that all adds up? Because missing could be very expensive, and to assume there won't be any more recessions or dramatic financial changes or demographic impacts in the society, I think, makes me a little uncomfortable that that isn't somehow heavily factored, that gas prices, although they bounce, they seem to always kind of keep bouncing up around $4, and you just keep thinking it's, it just hasn't found its height yet as time passes. What happens at $6 a gallon, you know, those kinds of factors as they build in?
Those are all very good questions. Let's see. You know, the forecasts are as good as one's ability to forecast, let's say, growth. So as I mentioned before, the state first develops the population forecast, the employment forecast, gives to the counties. If their forecasts are off, then let's say our county forecasts are off.
Well, let me give you an example, because we do our budget for every, was it every five-year, sort of a five-year lookout, we have projected a certain amount of growth and hit the recession, and our budget went off the cliff, or it's kind of off the cliff, went off the, you know, the embankment, and was not something we could foresee. Compression hit, not some, you know, you wouldn't see real estate values. I mean, so just looking at five-year modeling in terms of something as reasonably predictable as property tax growth, real estate value growth, and in a very short span of time, it changed dramatically. And that's what makes me wonder here about that kind of long-term forecasting, I guess.
Well, I would say that, look at that graph I showed you on the West Salem growth, and I guess that's one where you have to ask yourself, are those the forecasts that we believe are the ones that are legitimate? We've looked at the land uses, we know what's available for development, we looked at the growth of Salem, where that population could grow, and we placed it on the ground and said, these people will travel, they'll travel to work, shopping, they'll cross the bridge. It's as valid, I think, as we can get with, which is actually a very good travel model. The hard things to guess are, well, maybe will West Salem or the state keep growing like that or not? It's hard to know. People can, have said to us, well, maybe people will move from California, Arizona, and the population will be even greater than you're forecasting. Other ones saying, no, it won't. So it's, there is a pretty good way of forecasting population, as I said, given from the state, it works its way down to the counties. It's probably the middle-of-the-road type of forecast, based on births, deaths, migration, et cetera. And as far as the actual travel people do, we are still forecasting people will travel to work, travel for shopping, and we made a reduction, as we mentioned a couple of times, that we think some alternative modes will assist in reducing the forecast we initially came up with. But we can't, we can't precisely know what all the factors are that may change travel in the future. As we said, as you mentioned, 20 years ago, did we know what the internet would do for travel? We didn't know what gas prices. So it's a tough business to know what's going to happen 20 years from now, but we do the best we can with the information we have.
Thank you.
I have two questions, and I'm not certain if you're the correct person to answer them, but we'll give it a try, anyway. You mentioned a couple of times this evening that in looking at some of the charts, the lack of housing... lack of housing permits, the reduction in the number of housing permits, as you were talking about traffic flow and population.
I'll get to that.
Do you remember what?
Yes.
Where that was?
That one, right? So these are building, these are building permits and the amount of housing per year for West Salem.
Right, right. Right. But I believe that you also applied that data in that comment in another chart that had to do with numbers of trips?
I was saying, one likely factor for the reduction in trips on the bridges since the peak of 2006 was likely the drop of building permits. So development pretty much slowed down and stopped.
Right.
It's probably a lag in here.
So my question is, yes, there were construction workers driving back and forth, building all the houses, but all the people that moved into those houses are still there, and they're still driving back and forth. Is that a correct assumption?
Of course, right.
Oh, okay. So the decline in the permits doesn't really cause a reduction in the number of trips? It just, it is one factor in evaluating reductions in percentages of?
Well, as I, let me get back to this graphic here. Oops, I'm sorry. So my point was that the bridge volumes kept growing and growing and growing as West Salem was developing and more, everyone, people were moving in. Then with that decline, we saw, you know, less people moving into West Salem. So some of the growth, if it was growing the same amount, you probably would have seen this line not decline so much. It wouldn't have dropped 5,000, it may have stayed at its peak. But the fact that it declined was probably one factor for this curve to start going down instead of flat or up. And the fact that here on Wallace Road, we still had some building going on in 2007 to 2011, so we see some growth on Wallace Road. It's hard to put a one-to-one correspondence between any of these factors, between just building permits and the volume, or just gas prices, or just employment. I say factors. They're not, they're not the key factor or the only factor, it's just one corresponding factor.
Yeah, okay. Well, I can understand why the reduction in housing permits could lead to a reduction in the percentage of gain, but not in the actual total figures, because the people that have moved there have moved there. And then my second question has to do with the fact that the figures, if I'm understanding this correctly, that much of the modeling is based on, were it figures collected in 1994, 18 years ago?
Well, that was just one, one dataset we used to look at the model to see if it's working correctly.
So has there been data collected since 1994, and if so, when?
Well, a number of data is used in the model. Of course, we use the land uses and the building permits to know what is in the base year.
Right. And I was actually referring to the actual traffic counting.
Yeah, and we have traffic counts on all those facilities, on the bridges, we use whatever our base year is, if it's 2000, if it's 2005, we compare the base year travel model to counts for that, for that year.
Okay, so how often are those counts read from the counters? Or are they out there all the time, or only?
There are certain locations where they're counted 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. On the bridges themselves, there's a spot near Oak Knoll Golf Course, where they have these buried counters that count traffic all year round. There's one on Wallace Road, near the Park and Ryan. So there are permanent count, those are called the permanent counters, and then every three years, ODOT does a, what they call a tube count, lay a tube across the road and count the, in between those counters.
Yeah, oh, I see, okay. And so all of those figures are fed into your models?
Well, those are to check the model, there are other data that's used to feed in the model, like census data, other information.
Right, but the actual road count data, you're saying, is used or is not?
Oh, it's definitely used, yeah.
It is used.
It's definitely used. You want to build a model that reflects as best as you can the current traffic patterns in the base year. So when we build a model and then we run the model, we're comparing it to whatever the base year traffic counts are. They were 2005, for this study, it was 2005, we used 2005 counts.
I see, okay, thanks. Okay, are there more questions? Counselor Nantke?
Yeah, so actually, just to follow along with that one, those are real numbers, they were just all added up and then divided to get an average, based on daily trips. Those are all from hard readers.
Those are, the red and the green are from hard readers.
Oh, right, South of Glen Creek, not at the Park and Ryan.
Yeah, the blue one is a tube count, but it's adjusted based on those bridge readers. I just talked to ODOT today about that.
My question is actually going to be getting back to what Counselor Clausen and Bennett said earlier. Will we get, if you go to your very last slide, we're showing traffic counts all over the place, will we get level of service for those interceptions and expected delays across the bridges?
I think, yeah, I think Dave Simmons, that's that part of the presentation, what the evaluation of the travel volumes are.
Because I think that gets back to, what does it really look like in 2031, or when is that, we get to a certain level? I work with several people, they can tell you what it was 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and what it is today. They all say, and you haven't built it yet. So it'd be interesting to see what those times are, because that's essentially what is unacceptable delay time.
Okay, Counselor Bennett?
Just one back, I want to follow up on the mayor's question on the housing.
Should I go back to that slide?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
(inaudible).
Does that, at what point, when you see something like that, does it, does it represent kind of a structural change in population forecasting? I'm looking at high points, but what, I guess my question is, at what point is it at 2007 or 2009? How do you do it to say, this represents a structural decrease in population just because the housing, the number of housing units dropped? And it will ripple through time as less people, just because the units aren't there for them to live in? Does it, does it work that way, or am I just imagining?
Well, I'm sorry, I don't have a graph now. The Council of Governments has collected building permit data going back quite a number of years, and if I was to show you a graph, it goes, you know, in the '70s, it went crazy, and then it dropped in the '80s, and then it picked up in the '90s. So you see these big peaks and valleys of when Salem was a hot area of growth and Salem area was a flat area of growth. And I just, I think that's the way, you know, the economy sort of works, there's these cycles. So you have to kind of use some judgment and say, well, and the state uses judgment to come up with their forecasts, as I keep referring to, that despite all these ups and downs, you have to come up with some growth rate that you feel comfortable with.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I think if we have no further questions, we'll thank you very much, Michael, for your presentation, and we'll move on to Dave and start again.
All right, so now I'm going to, we're going to run through the alternatives that are in the DEIS. Just, this is, I'll go through them quite quickly, and if you have questions along the way, you know, you can stop me. I just want to make sure, this is about just making sure you understand the full range that were studied in the document. And we're breaking them up into, talk about the alternatives that are the existing crossing, and then we'll look at the new bridge crossing locations. So the first alternative within the document is the no-build, and we talked a lot about that. That's not necessarily doing nothing, but it's doing what's in those fiscally constrained projects that are programmed out within the 20-year horizon. Alternative 2A is the alternative that looked at widening the existing bridges. And the areas that are shaded there as well are also additional street system modifications to add capacity as well. Alternative 2B looked at building a new bridge next to the existing bridges to shift over that, you can see the connections to Highway 22, and additional street modifications in West Salem to take that additional traffic, kind of a parallel system in West Salem, to feed traffic over the new bridge over to the Liberty Commercial couplet. Now we're going to look at the new bridge crossing locations. This is alternative 3. This looked at a new bridge that connected in West Salem at the Hope Avenue location, the same as where the alternative 4 connects, but it differed in where it connected on the East Salem side, essentially where Tryon comes in. So it's further north than alternative 4, and it connects up closer, right up with the Parkway. Alternative 4A looked at a new bridge, the same location on the, on the West Salem side, but didn't, on the East Salem side, connected up with Liberty, excuse me, with Pine and So then in addition, we had these add-ons, additional elements that came with the development of 4. And let me just back up for a second, this is, I'll weave in the, how we got from 4A to 4D at this point. So the traffic engineers, as using the travel demand model that Mike has been talking about tonight, our goal was to look to see, how could we reduce the traffic using the existing bridges? How could we reduce that congestion on those, in the downtown? Because as you, as you all know, everything funnels down, so on Wallace Road, everything funnels down to the existing bridgeheads, and then on the same thing on the East Salem side. So those key intersections, as you get close to the bridges, become the bottleneck, everything has to funnel through those. So we tried with the travel demand model, we plugged in a new connection, and this was meant to be, what's the minimum amount of infrastructure that we could build to create a new connection? Because everything is hubs and spokes out from the existing bridges, when we create a new connection, the traffic patterns change dramatically. And so this was represented that. And what did that do in terms of relieving traffic in downtown? And it definitely helped, it reduced the traffic on the existing bridges considerably. But we found that it didn't do, there was still a lot of congestion along Wallace Road, there was still a lot of congestion along Liberty and Commercial, and then those downtown, those Marion Commercial intersections around the bridgehead. So we continued to look for additional ways to try to pull traffic off the existing bridges, and that's when we came up with these additional add-ons. 4B looked at, well, what if we build a new bridge and we make additional capacity modifications to the existing bridges? So it's basically alternative 2A that we saw earlier, along with 4A, building a new bridge. 4C took that one step further, a couple of steps, several steps further, I should say, in providing that direct connection with Highway 22, in that it pulled all of those trips and all the truck traffic and such that would need to normally have to use the existing bridges on that, kind of a free-flow viaduct that goes through West Salem, connects over directly with the Salem Parkway. It also, what the traffic engineers added, were several additional capacity modifications in the West Salem area. You can see all of the gray, additional gray area, where we're adding additional capacity to try to take the pressure off of Wallace Road and provide more parallel routes of ways to get traffic from West Salem to the, to the new bridge as well, to try to reduce So 4D is very much the same as 4C that we just talked about. The main difference is in, is on the Hickory-Pine area, we pulled back, there was a one, we created this one-way couplet on Hickory and Pine that extended back to east towards about Fifth Street with 4C. This alternative pulled that back and didn't extend it as far into the neighborhood as 4C did. So it's just, it's almost the same, it's just slightly different around how far it penetrates into that Hickory-Pine into the neighborhood, is the primary difference.
Backwards and forwards on that?
Yeah. So you see the gray area, how it extends to about Fifth, past Broadway, into the neighborhood, we would extend the, a one-way couplet, basically, on Hickory and Pine.
Or do you keep some?
Yeah. So 4E, this is one that has since been dropped, but we developed this one because the only difference was it looked at shifting, from a park impact standpoint, this one shifted that viaduct into the, out of the park and into the neighborhood. And we've since determined that, looking at the park impacts that were created with 4C and 4D, that those were not significant enough that we needed to carry forward 4E, that it was better that we keep the viaduct in the park and we would eliminate the, reduce, further reduce the residential impacts that this alternative would create. This is the final slide, this talks about the costs for those alternatives. It is a lot of money. That's my presentation.
So I think one of the things, if I may, if you would go back to 4D, I think one of the important things, Dave, if you take an extra couple of minutes, is to talk about how, you know, things were, from 4A to 4D, things were built, and it's really just for counsel to understand how this process got from 4A to 4D.
Right.
Is, you know, in trying to address the purpose and need of addressing all of these traffic impacts over the next 20 years, you know, what all needed to be constructed, not just the bridge, so if you could kind of just touch on some of the gray areas, just so counsel understands how we got there.
Yeah, so I skipped through that rather fast. So 4A, as I said, what we realized is that 4A was kind of the minimum, if you were just going to build a new bridge and connect it in with Liberty Commercial over here and Wallace on the other side, that that's, that was the minimum infrastructure. When you start to pull, in order to help reduce congestion on this lower end of Wallace and, let's say, on the Liberty Commercial couplet area, as well as just trying to get the trips down, reduce that amount of traffic that has to use the existing bridges, with this alternative, we pulled off all of that direct traffic that's going to destinations, let's say, north, north and east of the bridges, within Salem or up to I-5 or wherever they're going, Silverton, Woodburn. This alignment, this alternative does that. It also provides additional connectivity on the West Salem side to take some of that pressure off by building a direct connection with Orchard Heights to allow that, so that not everybody has to come down and use Wallace Road to get up to the existing bridges, this parallel route that you see here, additional improvements. And these, they're gray because we're actually making additional capacity modifications over what's included in the city's plan, just to try to handle a little more capacity. So that was the goal, is that we, in doing, I mean, we didn't start out trying to build something as big as this. It evolved just through the nature of how can we, what's the, how far can we move the needle in terms of reducing the number of trips that use the existing bridges?
Counselor Clem, do you want to ask a question right now?
Thank you. Just want to confirm, Dave, of all the alternatives, one of the, one of the key datasets that we talked about and looked at was delay time. And in comparing, besides cost, besides impact to neighborhoods, and a host of other things, one of the things that we looked at was the delay time. In the EIS itself, it talks about no-build alternative, the AM delay is 674 minutes. So I'm just quoting that from one of the charts here, but alternative 4A seemed to not have as much of an impact on the morning delay as 4D did. So each one of the alternatives, just want, if you could speak to some of the other criteria that were used in terms of evaluating the different alternatives.
Yeah, and this goes back to the complexity of the corridor with, you know, the existing kind of hub-and-spoke system going right, all going right down across existing bridges. When we changed that- When we changed that to the new bridge, add the new bridge to the system, how the traffic has to redistribute through there. We struggled, I think, as a, as a group to find a measure that could summarize the, the system performance and how, how the, how, and vehicle hours of delay is what Counselor Clem is referring to, that's one that, one measure that we used. In terms of looking at, we had, uh, 25-some different intersections within our study area, within the, within the project footprint area, and we looked at the congestion, the, the volume to capacity that you spoke about, and we added up, once, what we did was, we looked at, once those intersections reached, uh, capacity, we, as an individual intersection, started adding up that delay that the, that the, um, analysis, the formulas, uh, provide for us. And then that's how we came up with those overall vehicle hours of delay. Now, that's not a measure that people can relate to in their travel periods, but it's one way that we, and, and for comparative purposes within the document, one measure that we, at a glance, gave you some sense about what they did in terms of reducing congestion.
When we sit in our cars, we understand it.
What's the number? What happened?
Yeah, where are those numbers at? How do we see them?
The, the vehicle hours of delay, we have some slides on those that we can, we can show you if you, if you want to see those, that, um, it was part of the, I, I have some of those, if you want to switch to them.
Well, I think if you're through going through all of the alternatives...
Yes.
Then it might be a good time to switch to that and...
If any of you has any questions on these slides, maybe?
Well, are there questions?
I just have a really good question.
Okay, Counselor Sharon?
Could you please go back to 4B? I just want to see the connectors on the West Salem side compared to...
Very much the same, uh...
No, disappointing.
...as 4A in terms of how the new bridge connects.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Counselor Chesler and then Counselor Nanki.
Did you want to go first? I heard you sputtering.
So, I'm curious, how, you know, when the final vote came, I assume you took a vote or was it consensus?
With the, with the task force?
Yes, correct.
Uh-huh.
Did you take a vote or was it consensus?
At the, at the end, we took a vote, and that's what's reflected in the documentation that's, we have from that.
Can you, um, I, I'm asking you to do something from memory, and I understand it's not precise, but can you tell me how much support there was for no-build and how much support there were for the alternatives? Obviously, 4D won out, but I'd like to see, could you break that down into what the support looked like?
We could get the actual numbers for you. It's, it's in the summaries that I believe, uh, were to be provided, I think.
They're posted on the website, and we will email you that link tomorrow. Um, Mike, I don't know if you have it memorized.
It was sent out to the, to the oversight team members. Fundamentally, I'll, I'll say this one thing, though, is that when we assembled the task force, the goal of that was to represent a, a broad, uh, group of, of stakeholders in the community. And so that's what we saw, was that there were people, and, and a fairly significant amount, who, who felt that, that, from their standpoint, that the no-build was the best solution, and, and we can get you the numbers on that.
So you would say that no-build and 4D were the two biggest choices?
They're primarily, yes, in terms of, uh, raw votes, if that's where you're going, yeah.
Okay, and, and thank you for pointing out where that was. I just didn't have time to go through all that stuff today, so I do apologize to you for that. Um, the other question, may I ask another question?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Um, I have one more question, and, um, in the DEIS, is this a good time to ask a question about that? Okay, there's a reference to alteration of the main channel of the Willamette River. I'm really meaning this does not mean yearly dredging or some type of maintenance? Are you familiar with any reference to dredging or anything connected to that?
That was, that's not something associated with our project.
Okay, 'cause we do not want to get into any type of dredging operations.
That's another EIS.
Okay, I doubt it would even be permitted, but anyway, I just wanted to ask about that. Thank you.
Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, can you hit 4A, then B, and then D again? The reason for my, uh, is that configuration remains the same, the base bridge.
The base bridge, yes, stays as, well, as, as it is configured there, yes.
And so logically, if one were to phase, that would be there, everything else can be added on to that, correct?
Correct.
Well, and, as far as the EIS is concerned, I would dare say that there's, that there's even phasing, there's even possible phasing in there.
Less than that.
Because, because all that gray...
Is the extra capacity.
Is, is extra. Even building two spans versus one span, you could consider doing. So, so when we talked, you know, a couple of weeks ago about, you know, what council's option is and where we're headed, you know, there are any number of things that can be done...
Right.
...to address. And I guess, what, you know, what I would say is, as we've talked about, as we've shown you what the numbers are and what the forecasts are, you know, as, as we get into the discussion, you know, part of what council needs to decide is, is, okay, so, uh, there's, there's gonna be more traffic, there's gonna be growth, there, whatever the timeline is, you saw the map, that shows all that yellow going to blue in West Salem.
Correct.
You know, whether it happens in 10 years, or 15 years, or 20 years, or 30 years, that's how we planned our community. So that's coming, and that will generate new trips. So the question really becomes one of, you know, what we talked about earlier, what do you want this project to address? You know, the first question, you know, as we, go ahead and turn the, my, my low-tech slide there, Dave. Thank you. Uh, you know, so, so, so we go back to the, to the, to the first question. Do, do we feel that we need another crossing, first and foremost? And then the second question, if you want to, thank you, you're doing a great job.
This is very, very smooth.
Is, is, what do you want that to accomplish? What 4D accomplishes is everything.
Right.
So you believe the numbers, you believe that the growth will happen over 20 years, there's all this congestion, and all of that gray in 4D address, attempts to address all of that. Or you can prioritize what you want to accomplish, what, what you want that bridge to accomplish. We're gonna have to prioritize anyway, because we can't afford $800 million in a pop, but what do you want this, this, this project, or these series of projects, to address? And that gets back to the question of, well, hey, one-hour congestion, big deal, you know, we're willing to accept that because we can't afford more than that, and, and we don't want all this asphalt. So then you start to compress into something, into whatever, whatever you feel, whatever you, as the council's policymakers, feels that makes sense. That's why, what do you want to accomplish, and what do you want to prioritize, and what do you want to trade off, becomes important questions in deciding what, what it is that you want this, this project to be, and how much of, you know, the blue is the blue, you gotta, you gotta span the, you gotta span the water, you gotta span the floodway. After that is, what do you want to accomplish, and how much, you know, do you want to accept some congestion? We have a history in this community of, of accepting a certain level of congestion, because we don't want to see all that asphalt. So all that's okay, that's what, that's what this is about.
If I can follow on that. Can we go to the very last slide, Glenn, that had all the, uh, the pricing?
Dave.
Yeah, I was saying, again, and I've got a hell of a fucking mind right there.
Again, Glenn.
So if we look at 4A there, and we have data from all of the alternatives, it tells me how exactly, how much traffic was diverted on 4A. If that was a phase one, that would say for 306 million, this is what happens to the main bridge. I have that number somewhere. And I would like to see those in, in table form, as far as what those each give us on the main bridges, if, if I could?
Yeah. I'll say that, so I think, just to summarize what Peter was saying, is that anything you decide to build would likely be built in phases. So there's a discussion about that, and, in terms of, um, any of these build alternatives are expensive. And so you, you could develop a feasibility or phasing plan, and at each step along the way, let's say you build the first piece, and then five or 10 years go by, and you decide to build the second piece. All of these things that we were speculating about in terms of traffic, and what's influencing traffic growth, you get an opportunity from the time you kick off the first phase to the, say, a future phase, to reevaluate, because the travel demand model is being updated on a periodic basis. So at each step of the way, you revisit what's your, what's your best, what's your current and best thinking about what future demand is.
Counselor Clausen?
Yeah. Thank you, Dave. That actually segued exactly into my question, which is, I'm, I'm really interested in making sure we don't limit ourselves in this EIS. I could see us maybe ending up at just a, you know, a smaller piece, but I think we should keep this option open as long as we can, and what, how does the phasing work? If we went for 4A and we split it into five phases, versus if we went for 4D and we split it into 10 phases, do we need to decide that in the finding, in the findings of the EIS? Or is that, you pass the EIS and then you dream up a project, as long as it fits within that EIS, that's a phase, you've just identified a phase? Is there a timing element, I guess? Do we have to commit to phases before the EIS is finished?
You have to, you have to develop kind of a, an idea of a fund, of a, of a phasing plan that's part of your document, to have, how you envision that you would build it, and, and develop what's called kind of a first fundable phase, uh, from a financial standpoint. But I think those things evolve over time, so it's meant to be at that period of time. It doesn't mean that it locks you in at that particular time. As things change, you get new information, uh, traffic forecasts, or the trends that we see, whether they're, you know, um, we, we can, we have a chance it's changing, I think, is, is, is the simple way of answering that.
As a follow-up on that, then, I don't think this is probably where we're prepared to go tonight, especially at night of the time, but I'd be interested if, since funding is part of the initial implementation of the EIS, when do we have that initial conversation about the funding and, you know, what is realistic for a potential fundable phase one? I don't think it's tonight, though.
Well, you know, we've, you know, two weeks ago, we talked about not, at least in these work sessions, not to get caught up in the funding just yet. Because, because when you think of, you know, you're, you, we really need to, you know, we really need to decide what it is that we want to accomplish, and then, and then phase from there. You know, it's, it's easy to say, well, we'll never afford 800 million, so therefore, you know, this is just too big, let's just not worry about it. Well, there's, there's a lot of opportunities, and even within that 306 million dollar 4A, there's opportunities to make that, you know, significantly smaller. So, so my recommendation to you is, let's, let's get to a point where we're comfortable with what we want to see, you know, to what point, and then we can talk about, you know, a project that is, you know, half a 4A, 150 million dollars, is significantly different, how we're gonna fund that, how we can fund that, than 4, you know, than 4D at 687 million dollars. Those are two completely different things, so, so I think it's important to first decide, you know, get a, get a consensus of, this is what we want to see, then we can talk about how, how we can fund it. And, and I'll be honest, I won't even speak around it. You know, if we're, if we're at 4D, we're probably, you know, tolling, uh, significant additions to, uh, to, uh, vehicle registration, gas taxes, you know, there's a whole host of things that you'd, you'd be forced to do because that number's so large. If you're at 300, 200, 150, then we really can talk about bonding, uh, you know, there's, it's, so, so it's, you know, it's a more traditional way of approaching things, traditional for us, of doing things. So, so that's why I'm, I'm reticent to say, hey, let's give you the numbers, and let's start talking funding, because I know there's a lot of energy around things that, you know, are not really very palatable, and there's, doesn't make any sense to burden the discussion when we don't even know, as a group, what we want yet.
I agree with that. Sorry, I agree with that, and, uh, I'm, I agree we need to get to our goals so that we can kind of come back and take it apart. But I'd be just interested, I guess maybe we need to have the conversation about what is the reality of phasing at some point?
Yes.
And what is the reality of, if we set a large goal, how do we get the smaller phases to take bites out of it? You know, and I think we need to understand, you know, if we set the large goal, does that mean, I mean, we can't go back to the more traditional forms of funding, just to get one piece out of the way, wait till that one's done, do another traditional form, so on and so forth.
All right, so my, so my, so my plan for you, Dave, if you turn the, the next page, thank you. Uh, you know, at, at, at some point, you know, I want to have the discussion, I want to, I want to help you to have the discussion of what it is that you want. And, and, and we can go from, from, you know, 4D downward, or we can go from 4A upwards, but, you know, let's start, you know, once we kind of have addressed those questions, yes, we feel we need a river crossing, uh, these are the kinds of things that we want to address, and there's a lot of requests that we can bring back next time about. So what does each phase mean to the, the river crossing and, and delay? And we can kind of lay that out so that you have those tools, that we have those tools to talk about it. Then we can start to build on, you know, what it is that we want. But it's important to, if you can flip back on, on my low-tech system here, you're doing a great job, Dave. You know, I think, I think those two bullets are gonna be very important for, for council to think about. What is, what is our priority? Is our priority simply to have another crossing, and we'll just let traffic flow out the way it is? Or do we want to have, you know, some level of capacity, of capacity improvements, understanding that downtown's still gonna have some impact? Or do we want to fix everything? You know, hey, you know, and that will lead us into some level of this, and then some level of phasing, and then what does this cost, and then what are the opportunities for funding? So that's, that's where we're headed, to kind of, you know, so that, you know, all the cards, all the, all the discussion cards are on the table.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Counselor Thomas, go ahead.
Um, it's going along with what Counselor Clausen was asking about the phases. If phases were done, would there be an amount placed on each phase, or would it have to come back for approval of that amount?
Yeah, we would, we, we have a general idea. Obviously, we know, we have cost estimates for each option, and we can, we can probably rough out within each option, we can have, we can give you a general idea of what each costs. Again, this is all very preliminary, but, but we can give you, you know, kind of a handle on what each one of those can, uh, can cost, even within the phase.
Would the, um, how much of the burden would fall on the city? What portion would be the state ODOT's responsibility, or, um, is the school district part of this? Or, you know, how much of the burden would we have to carry?
Well, that's, that's, that's an excellent question. The more, uh, and I'll let my, some of my ODOT friends help me with this one as well, the more regional we make the facility, so the more it looks like 4D, where it has connections to the existing bridges, and it's really a free-flow, uh, facility from Highway 22 to Salem Parkway, the more it becomes a state facility where we would be seeking, you know, a, a big chunk of federal funding and state funding. As we ratchet it back to a more local facility, a 4A or, or, or a, or a portion of 4A, the more it becomes a local facility, and we would, we, the, the Salem community would probably be bearing more, more of those costs. So that's, now, within that, there are opportunities, I've talked to several councilors about, for example, using the, uh, the District 24J boundaries as a way of, of bonding for, you know, if we were gonna bond a project, you know, that's a boundary that we could use that, that would include, you know, Salem-Kaiser, uh, unincorporated areas of, of Marion and Pope Counties. So that's, that's a more, that's a more regional in terms of our, our community, but not a super region at the state level where, where that would be. One of the issues going with a 4D is we'd be competing with, you know, the Cascade River Crossing, we'd be competing with I-5, I mean, we'd be competing with projects all over the state and all over the country. Where a more local facility, it's just a matter of when we would like to fund it. You know, we could, we could, my assumption, my personal assumption, is we would get some state help, but it would be primarily a locally funded option. So just kind of, some food for thought, you know, just...
Okay, one more question. Um, what's the consensus? What do you feel the consensus is for which, uh, project would be chosen?
Uh, that's up to, that's up to you. I have, I have no sense whatsoever.
Counselor Thomas, this is Mayor Peterson. I don't think that we've reached any consensus on, on route, yet.
That would be correct.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. Is that it?
Mayor, if, if I can, um, the other thing to remember is that as we start putting together what you want and get more cost information, this may go back and forth a c-... what you want and get more cost information, this may go back and forth a couple of times, you know, if you come up with something that you just think isn't reasonable to fund, then there'll be more discussion.
All right, Counselor Clem.
Thank you. Peter, just speak for a minute, or maybe Dave or Mike. 4D is really, discounting 4E, 4D is really a, a, a 4A-plus. And so, in an EIS, the more locally cited you are, the more locally you pay for it, and the more grander vision, a vision of what things look like in 2031, the ability to compete for those funds is greater. Is that an oversimplified?
I think that's correct.
Okay. So 4D stands a greater chance of attracting funds from other sources.
Yeah, what, what, what adopting, what moving forward with, with 4D gives us is a vision of the future, a vision that says, yeah, that's, that's, that's what we're going to get a record of decision on, but we're only going to build some portion, you know, some portion of 4A. But it tells us that as we move along beyond building the first, you know, whatever that first phase is, that those are the kinds of projects that we would be looking for to build in the future, and we would have, we talked two weeks ago about, this record of decision kind of gives us the license to move forward, so.
But to variate.
So we, well, we would have that license, things can vary, but we'd have, we'd have that license to move forward, where if the decision is, and that's really part of this, kind of this priorities and trade-offs, if the decision here by the council is, you know, we don't like this vision of the future, we're okay with more, with, with, with more congestion, we're okay with not addressing every issue, because what we want is just this, then, then that's the record of decision that we'd seek, and that's the, you know, and we would, that's, that's all we'd have license for. If someday in the future, we said, okay, we built that bridge, but boy, we really, that, that connection between Highway 22 and the bridge really looms large, we really need that, we would have to start over. You know, we would have to go out and get another EIS.
And if you look at the, look at the history of the bridges, that's exactly what we've been doing for the last six years. We've been starting over again.
Right. So that's, but that's what, that's what this policy body has to weigh.
Okay.
All right, other questions? I believe Counselor Bennett, and then Counselor Dickey, then Counselor Blasey. Okay.
Well, just, just a couple, I want to check on a couple things you said, just to make sure I understood them, because I think this discussion of funding might be percentages and real cash, and that a percentage of whatever the number, I hear it between 600 and 800 million dollars, but for 4D, 50% leaves you sitting there trying to raise, you know, 300, 400 million. That is a lot different scope of local financial obligation than a much smaller project, although you pay 100%. I mean, it's where 100% doesn't equal 50, and I'm, I'm a little concerned with this.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah, I, I know. And the thing that concerns me is you add to it your comments, and I'm just following up with you, to do the larger project, you set tolls, registration fee, and gas taxes.
Yeah, they're all, they're all in the document, I mean, those are all, yeah.
But I think that, so we don't get lost on, well, we might somehow have somebody else pay for this. There is no somebody else to pay for a big percentage of, even a, a great big project. I, I just am, am concerned that it not be misunderstood that one project would cost local taxpayers, I don't know, 300 million?
Yeah, whatever, yeah, wherever it is.
Or wherever.
Yeah, wherever it is.
The other project could cost them 150. Very different, different kinds of projects.
That's right. That's right.
Counselor Dickey?
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of wondering when, as we're looking at talking about what our priorities are, what do we want, when we do have that discussion on whether or not we even want to consider phasing? We had a lot of discussion about that at our last work session, and, and it's pretty clear that we all kind of have some, our own opinions about whether we think that's a good idea or not, and I think that can shape what we want to accomplish looks like. If we decide we don't want to go with phasing, for example, that's going to look very different than the $800 million project. And my concern, as we start putting things on our wish list, and we, if we're talking about phasing, is that we could never get that done in the time that all of us at the table are on the council here, and in doing that, we may be obligating some other council or assuming some other council 10 years down the road is going to have the same vision that we have. So I, I'm just saying, I think we need to have that discussion soon about whether or not we even want to consider that, because that's going to shape what our wish list looks like and what we ultimately come out with in the end.
I'll speak for just a second. I just want to make a comment to that concept of encumbering a future council. In my way of thinking, it wouldn't be any different than, say, the Streets and Bridges Bond Project that the City Council put out to the voters, and the voters said, this is what we want, and then it takes a period of time for that to actually be implemented, and then you have a new council, but you don't take it back out. The new council doesn't decide whether it should keep going or not, and, and ask the voters whether we should keep going or not. It would seem to me that at some point, some decisions have to be made that do encumber the future council, just because it's such a, a, a large project of obviously staging, obviously, you don't get the bridge done in, you know, one year or one term, or, it just, some of these projects have to go over a period of time.
I think I was talking about phases that would take five or 10 or 20 years, so you build part of that, then you, with what you have, with the resources that you have, and then with the hope that, you know, 10 years down the road, you'll have the resources to build, you know, the second phase of it. I think I was meaning more that.
No.
And especially if we're looking at outside sources to help us out, the state or the federal government or whoever, then, you know, it's, it is a little bit of a risk to hope that those funds would be there when it was time to build Phase Two and Phase Three, and so on.
Mm-hmm. I see what you mean. Okay. All right.
I agree with Counselor Dickey. That was going to be one of my next questions is, pretty much what she said, taking it out to the voters and getting their input on that, because, like she said, we don't know what the future councilors will decide. They may decide, well, they don't want to do this, and then we put forth all this work and effort to keep things in order, and then they turn around and say, well, things didn't turn out the way that they planned, and so now we have a new timeframe, and we don't want to do this. And then you've wasted all this time and effort and money and, you know, people's hard work and frustrations and whatnot. So I agree with her about the putting it out to the voters, or at least thinking about doing that.
Okay. Let's see, we are to Counselor Blasey, and then Counselor Clausen.
I think, I think Counselor Bennett covered my, my concern, particularly with regards to talking about, and, you know, building our wish list. I guess I'm concerned that as we build our wish list, again, just keeping in mind the potential for, you know, as Peter, that you mentioned, a tolling, I mean, I, I just don't see that being a, you know, a very popular option, so I think if we keep reminding ourselves of that. But I did have one question about.
Can you speak up? I'm sorry.
Yes, please. I got the other ones figured out, I got those figured out. This one is a little challenging, I can't really, I do have a question about the, the options. Could you please clarify, though, between 4A and up, the capacity of the bridges themselves? Because we're talking about increased demand and use as, as we move out, but, you know, 4A is, you know, a, a fourth of the price, does that, but does that limit the capacity on the bridge itself? Are we talking two lanes versus eight lanes? How big of a bridge are we talking between those two?
The, excuse me, the new bridge is, with 4A, as it's currently shown in the document, is the same size bridge as was, would be built in, with 4D. And that was, that was done intentionally based on the fact that we wanted to start out with what's that minimum amount of infrastructure, but also have a footprint for that bridge that is conservatively, it's big enough that we don't underestimate the impacts in the document.
And that is what, Dave?
That is three lanes in each direction.
Three lanes, okay.
Yes, and it's actually, I should say, with 4A, there's actually two separate bridges. There's a bridge going eastbound and a bridge going westbound.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, Counselor Blasey? No, that's it? Counselor Clausen, and then Counselor Clem.
So I've got a comment and a question. I appreciate Counselor Bennett's perspective on the state funding and local funding, it was good. Good way to think about it in terms of percentages. But one thing I definitely wanted to think about, though, too, is early phases of this project, I think everybody would agree, would be more locally centric, which would probably mean earlier phases would be local funded, locally funded. Further on, as you get out of the local impacts of, you know, say we start with just three lanes, you know, and two lanes and a center, one lane and two lanes and a center lanes, we just build half that bridge as Phase One, you know, that's going to be local funding. And then as, as you grow that, you have more potential for state funding or federal funding later on in the later phases. So I just want to, I think that that makes some sense, I think there's some logic to it, so as you move forward, you have larger potential of future phases, getting future, you know, more outside funding, just a thought on that. And I really liked the conversation about potentially limiting future councils, too, because I think our, our most drastic limitation we would place on future councils would be to not provide a robust and flexible EIS for council to work with. If you, if we, if we as a council limit down to 4A and just say, hey, we just want to focus on local traffic, we don't really want to look at the through-traffic as much, or, you know, we can't bear that cost right now, you know, that's a little bit short-sighted in my view, just in terms of saying that, hey, we can't bear it today, but 20 years from now, what can we bear? Because there's, theoretically, this document could live through 2035, and it might not be done, and council could be looking at it if we approved 4D. Then they could have a choice, then. If we limit the scope, they don't have a choice. They cannot go back without starting from scratch. So I think our highest limitation on future councils is to reduce the scope of the EIS. They have options if they have a larger amount of EIS to work with, and then later on, they could just choose to vote and say, hey, look, we're done, we're closing this, and we're out of here, if we've gotten halfway through it and halfway to the, you know, to the culmination of that goal. So just a thought that I've got floating around in my head.
Okay. Counselor Clem, and then Counselor Nanki.
Dave, maybe you will show us this tonight or some other night, but I'm curious that, you know, what we're looking at here in the pictures that we've seen tonight, or sort of diagrams of where the proposed bridges would be. What's not drawn out is a number of things, as Counselor Bennett pointed out, you know, what's the Marine Drive thing look like and so forth. So my question is really pointed at, will you show us the impact of which of the 23 intersections you used in, in helping us to derive the delay time? I mean, we're just not talking about one route here, we're talking about literally hundreds of left and right turns and straight-through intersection impacts that any bridge could have. Will that be presented tonight, or, I mean, we're talking about all of Salem really being impacted by all these traffic counts. So we're talking about traffic counts at Hickory and, and Broadway, we're talking, I mean, it's just a number of things.
What we want to do, Counselor Ford, uh?
For next time, is just lay out what, you know, what, what you get, you know, with some specificity, but, you know, with some manageable specificity.
Right.
What you get with each phase, so that as we have the discussion about what our priorities are and what we want to get out of this project, you have, you have some sense of, of that, and I think that information is, is, is available, so that we can, so we can have that for you to kind of guide the, the discussion, or have the discussion.
We're talking about all of Salem's traffic being impacted, not just the east-west movements, the north-south congestion that we, you know, it's just as much a function of any decision or trade-off decisions we make here, so I just want to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that this isn't a what I really want proposal, this is what we're really going to need in terms of employment, mobility for the entire town, housing as well.
Okay. Other coun, Counselor Bennett?
No, I'm in a.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Counselor Nanki was next, and then Counselor Bennett.
Getting to Counselor Clem's comment, which I had asked on the upfront as far as the, the expected delay times and, and level of service at all the intersections, is that what will actually be brought back then, based on different?
That's, that's a lot of, a lot of detail. We could, we could get drowned in, in numbers, we could try to find some way to synthesize that for you, and maybe focus in primarily around the bridgehead intersections, because we know, you guys all know, we have, it's all in the document. I think you know that the Marion Commercial Intersection is one of the key points that from your own experiences, when that intersection backs up, the ripple effect throughout the downtown. And so we can focus perhaps on some of those key intersections around the bridges to give you a sense about how those intersections perform, because those are indicators of, you know, what, what happens, what they do. When, when they're not performing, you know, you know from experience what happens.
And then if I could, one other, that would really be nice, knowing that, if you really want to irk, pardon my French, irk off voters, you give them a number, and I don't know if I've ever heard of a project of, of this magnitude that's like, geez, it started out was going to be 300 million, now it's 700. What's our confidence factor? And can we get some other bridge estimates? And what they started at and what they really cost at the end?
Yeah.
How did we come up with these numbers? Based on, on what criteria? How is the number generated?
So there's, at, at this stage, they're, they're what's called order of magnitude, rough, they're using basic empirical data that we have on unit costs for, for these elements. So they're very gross estimates for comparative purposes, but it's the typical methodology that's used at this stage of the game, and as we, as the project, once a decision is made in terms of a preferred alternative, you invest additional engineering time in that typically, and as you do so, you gain more information that helps you increase the accuracy of the estimates. In a project like any of these infrastructure projects, they go through that iterates, as the design advances, you gather more information, and, and the cost does oftentimes go up. We try to account for that in, with contingency items early on, but things happen, and, for example, the Sellwood Bridge is, is an example, a project that's gone from that environmental phase and it's now under construction, and as that information, as the engineering advances, they have to make choices sometimes about, gee, we can't, we realize this is going to cost this much now, because we've got all this, for example, subsurface information, we know what the river's doing, how deep our foundations need to be, those are going to be more expensive, and so you make modifications, and that's been what's happened, for example, with Sellwood, is that they've had to make design scope changes in the project to fit within the money that they have. And then they get, they've, they've, the funding has gone along in parallel with that. They've got other little gaps, they've had funding gaps, they've gotten additional funding they've had, but then they've still had to make choices. So there's all sorts of factors that shape the project. One of them is being how the engineering advances and how that shapes the accuracy of your estimate, but also it's what, what funding you have to work with for that first piece.
Okay. Okay?
If nothing else, we'll do my own research to just find, because all of them had that comparative number study.
Yep.
It'd just be nice to see some numbers that say, and this, but this is what it really came out to, this is a, in the last, how many that actually came in real close to that, or, you know, double.
I'll tell you, Counselor, there are so many variables, so many variables related to, just, just variables related to right-of-way acquisition that can make the difference. I mean, even, even when we got to the future, the decision of building one span versus two spans can be a gigantic difference in costs. So I, I think what you have to do is you have to use these costs as, just for, for, for. So I, I think what you have to do is you have to use these costs as, just for, for, for comparison. You know, if you want to build, can you go to the, the cost? I think you just have to accept, can you, yeah, you just have to accept them as, as orders of magnitude of the decision-making that, that you're doing. I mean, we can get to 4D and, you know, when we actually went, if we had the money to build the whole thing, we could end up with the whole thing costing 590 million or we can have the whole thing cost a billion dollars. I mean, there's so many variables involved in it that it's, you couldn't even, at this level today, there's no way to get much better than that. So, I mean, we don't even know when we, when we design, I mean, right now we have Wallace and Glen Creek intersection at 90% design and I still can't tell you how much it's going to cost because we haven't bought the first square foot of right-of-way. That variable alone can swing that project wildly, the cost of that project wildly. So that's, it's very difficult. This is, this is really the best that we have today and that's, we have to kind of proceed based on these orders of magnitude and understand what they are, where they come from. That's what they are.
We'd love to have certainty in terms of what the forecasts are going to be in 20 years or what things are going to cost in five years or 10 years, but, you know, this is the methodology that is used to develop these infrastructure projects. Statistically, there is some data in terms of, you know, what, what this level of estimate, how the range is, you know, minus 50% to plus 100% in terms of the accuracy range. There is statistical data out there, but I don't think it's going to make you feel more comfortable in terms of making the decision.
No, I just, you know, wondering if 300 is really going to be 500, but how many times have we done this for other bridge projects in the last five or 10 years? And then what have we seen number-wise? How, around the state? How many other bridges have, have we gone through EISs with and estimates and how many have gone under construction and what do we see?
Not, not too many. Tim Potter, do you have, can you raise your fingers, how many EISs the state has done? Two, three, four?
I don't know what the original cost estimate was for I-5 between A's bill and air change and cooler, all of the modifications that were done there, but that's the only one that I can think of that we've seen the full span of what the EIS looked at to compare, this is what we envisioned 24 years ago, this is what we finally built. I honestly don't know what that comparison is, but that's.
Yeah, that one was more than an order of magnitude, more than likely.
My understanding is question, because that's now what she's trying to get at.
Yeah, just to see, you know, historically how accurate people's numbers been.
For an individual bridge project, we're very, very good. We, we build our projects, ODOT, the state side, about 97% of us average somewhere around that. So when you're talking one individual project, but when you're talking about a stack of projects over a span of 20-plus years, it's much harder.
Okay, let's move on to Counselor Bennett's question or questions.
I'm looking at the suggestion on Peter's list. Are you looking for us to just give you the kinds of priorities we look at when we talk about a river crossing? Is that what you're asking? I'm not sure.
Well, no, what, where we need to head is when you look at, can you go back to, on, on your high-tech, there you go. You know, when you look at, at, go back to 4D, when you look at 4D, the reason 4D looks the way that it does with all that gray and all those extra projects is, is 4D is trying to address a lot of issues. Congestion downtown, congestion in West Salem, movement from Highway 22 to Salem Parkway. So, so, and that's why you get 4D. So what, what, what I think, and just trying to help you get to, to, to a decision, well, to, to whatever, you know, is what, if, if you don't like, I mean, if, if everyone around the table said, yeah, we want to do everything, let's just go, then we don't have to go through this exercise, then we're done.
I guess what I, I'm thinking, Peter, is I'd like to add a couple things to your priorities. This is, this is focused on very long-term traffic projections and population change and dealing with modeled traffic. And the common word there is traffic, 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 okay? It's all about traffic. It's not about anything else relative to the community, but moving traffic through.
Right.
I, I really suggest, for me, it's going to be very important, if I'm going to look at any of these alternatives, that they have some sort of economic development component that benefits the neighborhoods affected. That we are in the process of redeveloping North Downtown and if somehow a bridge into North Downtown does nothing but destroy housing and businesses, what goods at in terms of the economic development of North Downtown?
That's part of that, and part of the trade-off. Yep.
And, and we have a council, a city policy of connectivity. And if this represents connectivity between Portland and Newport, wrong connectivity. But if you bring it down to a scope that involves the kind of thing we looked at on Mildred, where we had two dead ends coming together and trying to, and, and bring them together, the compound, but brought them together and said that's connectivity, that's entirely different because it's Pine Street to Hope Street.
Right.
And it isn't about New, you know, Portland to the casino, which is what this looks like to, to just, you know, a guy from North Salem who's concerned about the economic impact on his, on his community. As I understand it, and correct me, but I lose in that, in that set of neighborhoods, all of that's in my ward. I lose, it appears, 160 housing units and businesses. Well, that's not particularly good for a part of town that is really the part of town that represents affordable housing and small business, you know, mom and pop business. So I'd be very interested in how this conserves housing, improves the future of housing, rather than wipes out a whole set of housing and particularly housing, you know, I think predominantly housing low-income and Hispanic residents. So I, there's quite a bit going on here from my perspective in terms of my priorities that have nothing to do with Portland to the casino. So those are the kinds of priorities I bring to the table to talk, to even begin to talk about a river crossing, plus.
That's, that's all part of it.
Plus, I recall.
Doesn't say traffic priorities there, it just says priorities and trade-offs. So those, those are, those are critically important issues.
And, and then I add to it, I recall an earlier, that I think an earlier slide Julie brought to us, that really showed the issue in terms of our localized traffic comes out of the hills in West Salem, that they're going or they're coming, depending on which way you're headed, that whether or not a different kind of configuration represents some sort of safety valve for that group of people as well. And does it start to meet some of those kind of short-term traffic needs? But again, if all it's about is traffic, moving traffic through here between I-5 and Highway 22 and creating a freeway through the middle of an established neighborhood, I just can't figure out how that represents any kind of progress. So, and it's way too expensive. So how do we get this down to a cost that you could even ask people to not just laugh you out of the room?
I want to jump in here and just ask a question for clarification and that is, is there a list of these 160 residences and businesses?
Numbers that keep showing up in EISs and emails.
Is that correct? Is that correct?
They are identified in the document, yes, and we have that information.
Okay.
Can you explain the range?
In terms of the displacements?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the question is that there is a range of displacements. In the, in the document, what we try to do is conservatively estimate what that footprint is and what the impact area is. And but, but there is a range in terms of those commercial and residential displacements that we put in there because as the design evolves, we better define, do in fact, do we create that impact or can we design around it? Does that get, answer the, get where you're going?
Yeah, and then the business issue, I mean, you know, how many businesses are working?
That's true. At this early stage, we, the, the question is, the clarity in terms of the range with the commercial displacements is, is that at this stage, we don't necessarily know how many viable businesses there are in, let's say, in a building. We know we might impact the building, but there, how many businesses within that structure, if there's multiple businesses, if it's a large building, how many we actually impact? So that, that affects the accuracy of the displacements that's in the document.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to say something?
Yeah, point of view, that's exactly where we would recommend council start, or with those kind of community priorities or neighborhood priorities. I think if you start with thinking, what's a traffic count at each intersection, you probably won't get to where you want to be. I think, I think those bigger issues are primary.
Okay, now, let's see. Dave, did you have any further slides that you wanted to get through this evening? Okay, I didn't want to have jumped in and stopped you from where you were, all right? Do we have other issues that we want to discuss because it's after 7:30 now?
So, so this took a little longer, but I think you got a lot of very specific information. So, you know, what I, what I want to stress is that this is a, an interactive process and we set up this way so that the council can actually workshop this issue. And this was the first question that we started with last time and it's the first question that I start with here and that is, you know, you know, do we, and we can start the next time with it, is, you know, do we need another crossing? Not 4A, not 4D, just do we need to bridge this river to address all of these issues? And assuming that the council still says that, yes, we do feel that we need another crossing, then the next step, and this is something for next time, is, you know, what do we want this crossing to accomplish or not accomplish, you know, or not impact? You know, so what are our priorities? Are our priorities to solve the traffic issues? Our priorities to save housing, our priorities to have it more, be more of a simpler bridge so that, yeah, we're crossing, but we're not doing a lot of this stuff? Or solve everything and, and have license for the future? And what are the trade-offs that we're willing to accept for each one of those? And I think that's, those are important components for the council to discuss. And as we discuss them, that I think will lead us to, you know, this is what I say, then once we understand those, we can start to build on what it is that we want and start to coalesce around, this is what we want. And then we can call it whatever we want, you know, 4A, 4B, 4A double prime, 4D, you know, and so that's what we get there. And then assuming that we have, you know, a consensus, then we can write a staff report around, you know, a staff recommendation that reflects what comes out of here and out of these work sessions so that we can have a public hearing and people can speak to what the council is, you know, wanting to do. And then we can move forward with the EIS. So I think that's, that's where we're going to head. So, so given, given the lateness of the hour, you know, my, my suggestion would be that next time, you know, we start with, you know, right here, you know, do one of the crossing and I'm assuming yes, because if not, we wouldn't have another work session, and then start to do that. We'll have some data that kind of speaks to these things and what we might do is just have them on boards at the table so we don't spend a whole lot of time on PowerPoint and spend more time on discussion, which is what, what, what I recommend to you that we do.
And it would seem to me that with those two categories, priorities and trade-offs, that, that under each, there would actually be several subcategories.
Of course.
And that would begin to map out.
Of course.
The local, you know, the, the regional, the.
Right.
The, the near term and the long range as far as priorities and the same thing with the trade-offs. It would almost seem like we could start developing a chart with a grid of, here's the priorities and here's some trade-offs and maybe recommendations based on how to mitigate some of the trade-offs.
Yeah, and, and, and I don't want to build, you know, I didn't come with, I mean, I want, I want council to fill that in because I can't begin to tell you what, you know, what your, I mean, I know what some of your concerns are, but I want, I think it's important to have that discussion. You know, Counselor Bennett's priorities are maintaining affordable housing, minimizing, I just heard you say it tonight, minimizing, you know, the, the number of homes and businesses that are, that are displaced. You know, Counselor Claussen's concern is, hey, I want to, I want to look out 30 years and I'll make sure that we're addressing the issue. Counselor Clem's concern is, hey, there's a lot of traffic and we need to address these traffic volumes. So all these things have to be put together and addressed and there's going to be, you know, like, like in any conversation, there's going to be some trading off that leads us to whatever, what I hope will be a consensus on option, you know, option Salem City Council, that we can move forward with.
And so in this process, we also have a chart that we were looking at before the last work session that indicated our work session and then we have certain other public bodies that we need to, or public officials that we need to consult with, work with. They need to be going through this process. Marion County, Pope County, Kaiser Turner?
Not.
Not Turner, okay.
Yeah, they're waiting for us.
They will be.
But then they'll be, after they go through their processes, we're going to be going through a further process. I'm wondering if they're going to be addressing the same kinds of steps that we are.
I, I don't know, I can't speak for them. I don't know that the Pope County Commission, for example, you know, which is one of our partners, will be as concerned over how many homes are relocated or, or impacted as the Salem City Council is. So I don't know that that's going to be as big a concern for them in terms of having the discussion.
Right, right.
Those kinds of things really have to be, you know, or what the, what the traffic impacts are in downtown Salem. So that's why that has to come from us.
Right, no, but I'm more, more about the, the sort of the template of how these discussions, I would hope that they will focus, as we will, on priorities and trade-offs and, and the, the vision and, and the long-range effects, rather than just how much money is it going to cost and who can pay for it.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, it would seem like a healthier body of decision-making.
The only discussion that we had was at some point in time, as we start to gel what's important to us, that, you know, maybe we ask, we invite them to participate. I, I wouldn't want to get too far down the road without at least inviting them and hearing their thoughts and having them, quite frankly, hear ours. And so I, I don't want to assume that we're going to get to a public hearing, make a decision and turn to them and say, oh, is what we do.
We want to do that first.
No, we, so it, I think we can't have too many more work sessions without including them, to be honest with you, so we invite them.
We have to do something. Yeah, well, yeah. Counselor Nanki?
Just to drop back, at the end of our last meeting, we talked about having everything that's been written on these nice flip charts posted on the website.
Yeah.
Is it actually there?
The, what, all of the, all of the, the issues that the council discussed last time is, is going to be an attachment on the, on the website and then we'll add this one as well.
Excellent.
We get rid of this level of detail.
Right, it's not to that level of detail.
And summarize and summarize and we're definitely keeping these, so that's.
It'd be, it'd be nice just to take a picture and, and I'd like to go back and look through some of the smaller pieces rather than summarize.
I will tell you that.
We did talk about that last time and I think that, I thought that we did say, we, we don't worry about somebody not being able to interpret that. I would just as soon have that thrown right up and then we know we can read through it and understand it. I don't think I'd want a lot of synth- synth- uh.
Synthesification.
Synthesification?
Yes, we could put it all in there, that's not a problem.
I mean, don't, don't try, you know.
That's not a problem.
Rewriting it and condensing it.
That's not a problem.
I kind of like it.
Get lost.
That's right.
That's not a problem.
If they can understand.
Do you have any idea of timeline as to when we're going to start seeing these up on the website?
Later this week.
Okay, oh, great. Okay, oh, great.
We're trying to get a shortened URL, so it's easier to get to, we have some stuff up already.
Okay. Good.
We'll send an email to you when it's, when it's all there, and then we will be building on it, so we can have those presentations from tonight, and put those slides up as well.
Good.
Can we give them a little review over Christmas?
You might. Well, I'd like to thank both Mike and Dave for coming, and for your presentations, for your preparation, for your time tonight. Thank you. You got out of, what, decorating or holiday shopping or something?
One more day they don't have for shopping.
So, so next time, next time we really start, I'm not even going to rewrite these, we're going to start right here, and we're going to move into, you know, we're going to have some information for you that informs, you know, that's, that's in the books, but we really want to get into the discussion. What do we want to see out of this thing, so we can start to get to an answer? Okay? Merry Christmas?
All right. And we don't have a date yet that.
Sometime in January.
Sometime in January.
Sometime in January, we do not have a date yet.
Okay.
I don't mind going back, if Chuck wasn't here, we're really happy with this discussion. I don't want to keep having the same discussion every time I have a work session either.